All right, it is now five thirty, so we were called to order the Adrian City Commission Work Study session for June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call please.
Mayor He, President.
Mr. Help.
President.
Mr. Roberts is there, too.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Mr. Cathcart.
President.
Mr. Go.
President.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Roberts.
At this time, I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. The first topic tonight is municipal pool. Both its current status and what it might be in the future. But I'm gonna initially turn it over to Parks and Recreation Director Davies and and we have our pool consultant online as well who's gonna go over PowerPoint. Recurring the results of the study that we commissioned some time ago. Jeremiah.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening, everybody. I've heard from the community about the pool. That's why we're here tonight. Yes, open up. This has been the, uh, it's been the term. And to that, we have been working daily to get that, our staff, even bringing folks from outside to come in and help us. To give you a quick update, what kind of slowed is the boiler? Most of you know, has finally seen its last, last bit of life, right? It was installed in nineteen ninety-nine. It's a metal part. Some of you have actually been down to the old pool to see that. So to give you a little information behind it, the boiler simply controls the temperature of the water, right? And one of the things optimally for a pool suggested that anywhere from seventy-eight to eighty-two degrees. It is our full temperature. As of this morning, it was sixty-seven degrees. And if you look at the forecast, starting to cool off again, anywhere from fifty to sixty degrees at night. So it's gonna hold that temperature roughly there. And that's a four hundred fifty thousand gallon pool. So realistically, you're not going to see the pool temperature increase. However, you can operate the pool without a boiler. Again, it simply can come down to what users are willing to tolerate in regards to the pool temperature. In regards to a boiler currently, if we were to order one, it's anywhere from eighty to ninety thousand. It's four to six months out. And again, boilers are designed for specific, right? So it's not like universal remote where we just go, let's go purchase this today. It's just gonna matter if we were. So again, our boiler, we've had a couple of different consultants come in, look at it, it's done. It's a big piece of metal. That's that served its purpose. It's like I said, it was installed in nineteen ninety-nine, so twenty-four years later, it's finally set. It's done, it's passed its life. So that's kind of the current update with boiler. The pump is thirty-five years old. It's spewing water, but however, we've got some people coming, we've been able to do a few tweaks to it. We'll allow it to continue to operate roughly the seven hundred fifty to eight hundred gallons per minute is optimal for our pool. It's doing that at the moment. However, you know, again, it's thirty-five years old and it's starting to show its wear and tear. Much to the dismay of others, it's lasted this long because our staff well before me has taken care of it, made it its PM. That's why it's lasted thirty-five years. Again, it's showing severe wear and tear at the moment, but it is worth. You have a new pump, roughly seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars. And again, the pumps aren't just like a universal remote. We just can't buy this pump if we wanted to today. And say for sure that in the future, if we were to act on a new pool, that this pump would transfer. However, again, you have it running. At the moment, the water quality control pump, that's what measures the pH and the parts per million. That's the health of the water. That's thirty years old. It's working intermittently at the moment. We believe we have it fixed or at least working enough to keep the pH balanced and the water healthy, healthy enough for eventual users. A new pump, roughly three to four thousand dollars. Again, these pumps are designed for specific. Yeah, so this is, that's kind of where we're at. The surge pit. That's where the water controls the water level. The original one from nineteen seventy-two, so it's fifty years old. It broke off this spring. Simply again, it was a piece of metal that's been sitting in water. Eventually broke off. To our credit, to our crew's credit, I had a couple of guys down there this past week. They were waiters submerged in the water. Figured out a solution. These guys do some really good work outside of the normal park exposition jobs. And we're able to get the pit float fixed. So as of today, our water level is back up. So again, just to kind of summarize, we have a fifty-year-old pool that is really showing its life. That's why you all decided to have the pool study that you're gonna hear about. Started even well before I got here. You know, made the decision to have the pool study done. And again, we're doing that because it's an old pool. It's on its last leg. However, we believe we can run it safely, right? Again, the water's clean. We're working on that. John Nos, a former city of Adrian employee, has been absolutely instrumental in bringing his knowledge down to the pool, helping us out, answering questions for us. And that's, again, it's a ton of credit to John for developing itself. So that's the success of the pool. We do want to open the pool. I'll admit, at the end of next week, we believe the pool will be safe, clean, and ready to go. And as you see with the resolution, we're moving to say, because again, the inconsistency of the mechanics of the pool, that we would like to waive the admission fee. We don't want people purchasing pool passes and things of that nature. We don't know really on a day-to-day decision-making, why whether the pool's gonna work, right? But again, we have it going. It's hanging on at this moment, but we would like to waive the fees, but allow simply city of Adrian residents and/or Adrian Public School students and families to come down to the pool and use it, knowing that the temperature is not gonna be at an optimal temperature, right? We, again, that's seventy-eight, eighty-two. This morning, it was sixty-eight. And that's coming off a stream of ninety-degree weather. Now we're moving into low eighties, high seventies, and at night, anywhere from forty-eight to fifty-eight degrees. So you can kind of imagine where that temperature is gonna stay at. But that's, again, we want to hold mid to late week. Next week, we're confident that it will be ready. Again, that's due to our park staff, John Nos, and the folks from D W helped us out. So things are up and moving. We're, we're super close. So that's what we're, our target goal is to get middle standard next week. So at this point, I'm gonna pass it over to Micos Valdez, Councilman Hunsaker. Micos and I have been in constant contact the last year, got to know each other. He's the gentleman that has been kind of the head of our pool study. And what he's gonna do now is simply take you in, provide a lot of information for you. And other than that, Micos?
Yeah. Thanks for the intro. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you again for also switching methods. I didn't intend to be there in person. We had a bit of a family crisis last night. So I wasn't able to get there today. So I really appreciate allowing me to do this. So if we want to go ahead and do I need to share my screen or does, are we gonna share a screen from the city?
No, you're gonna bring up the
You, you can go ahead and share your screen unless you want me to.
Okay, great, great. Okay, so everybody seeing that?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. So thank you again for having me. My name's Nicholas Valdez. I'm with Councilman Hunsaker. We're an aquatic design and engineering and consulting firm. We do work all over the United States and I'm here locally in, somewhat locally in the Detroit metro area. So it's been a great experience working with the city of Adrian. Everyone's been really awesome, really helpful, and I think we have a lot of great information to share with you today. We did this study along with Manic Smith Group, who is a local architecture firm for the city, and this is the kind of final study presentation. We'll take any ideas or any changes that you all would like to see incorporated and submit a final presentation and final report with any of those changes. So I wanted to start with our basic feasibility study approach. This is what we do more or less with every feasibility study that we do. We start with a needs assessment, which is essentially, what are the parameters of the project? What are the needs for the facility? What are the needs of the of the demographics or of the specific user groups? And what do we need to make sure we incorporate into the designs? The facility and space, facility program and space requirements is the, what could it look like phase of the study? So putting together different concept designs and making sure that those are going to meet the needs identified in the needs assessment. And then the last part is the operations and business plan, and that's the how will it operate section of it. And that actually kind of goes hand-in-hand with the facility program and space requirements. As we make changes to the, those facility programs, we update those with changes to the business plan. So as we did all of that, Jeremiah and his team have been able to see, excuse me, Jeremiah and his team have been able to see how those changes impact the facility designs as we go. So first, we started with the needs assessment with both a focus group, with focus group meetings and a public survey that went out to the residents of Adrian. And in those focus groups, what, we presented a lot of information and what we wanted to get from them is what is their definition of success for the facility? What are sort of the features that they would like to see? What would they not like to see at the facility? What are their needs as we're going through all this information? And the focus groups that we met with consisted of community members, current pool users, swim team members, some of the youth organizations, the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, area universities and schools, so Sienna Heights, Adrian College and Adrian Public Schools. We did those meetings over six focus group meetings back in March of twenty twenty-two and got a lot of great information from them. These are the highlights. Basically, they would like to, they really like the current location of the pool. It's where everyone knows that Bon Pool is, that they know where to go. They would like to see more year-round swimming. That's something that several several focus group members reiterated. And they would also like to see more space for concurrent programming. So if swim team was in there, that swim lessons could be also conducted. Or maybe if swim lessons were being conducted, that there could be some recreational swimming or swim team and recreational swimming. Those sort of things where you can have multiple programs, multiple things going on at once within that facility. In addition to those focus groups, like I said, we did a survey and submitted it or had it open to Adrian residents and non-residents. We received eight hundred and twenty-three responses, which I can tell you is awesome. I, around this time, I did a five-county survey in southeast Detroit, and I get about a thousand responses. So just to have eight hundred, some odd responses just from the city is amazing, and that, I really appreciate it. Seventy-eight percent of the respondents were Adrian residents and seventy-eight percent were residents for more than ten years. So they're all, so the majority were long-term Asian residents that responded. And what we heard from them is, one, is that the recreation user group and recreation pools are kind of number one in importance. When we talk about aquatic centers and pools and user groups, we typically center those around the four main aquatic user groups: recreation, wellness, and therapy, instruction, and competition. And the recreation user group was by and for number one. When we asked about what are the different amenities that they would like to see in the facility? We also ranked those. Number one was water slides. Number two is a lazy river. Three is lounging areas, which I'll show you here in a little bit what that looks like. And then four is a zero-depth entry or zero beach entry. And we want to make sure that we incorporate these top amenities into the designs that we show when we do that concept development. And then we also asked, what are the top programs that we'd like to see at the facility? Recreational swimming was number one, which is no surprise since recreational user group was number one as well. Swim lessons was number two, birthday parties number three, and water aerobic classes number four. So we use this information for when we do these concepts as well, that we make sure that we have spaces that will accommodate these type of programs and this type of use in the facility. So now that we had a lot of the information from the community that we needed to hear, we also needed to look at the site and the pool itself. And one of the questions that came up from Jeremiah and his team is can, it's can we renovate Bon Pool? Is it worth renovating? What would that cost be? Or do we need to really just focus on a new aquatic center? And in some respect, that's not an answer I can really give. I can give my recommendation and I can lay out the facts as we know it. But ultimately, that's gonna be up to the commission and the city to make that determination. But we do have a recommendation for you. Currently, Bon Pool currently resides in a hundred-year floodplain. Is that a deal breaker? No. But is it ideal? No, not either. It just kind of is what it is. There's things that we could do to mitigate some of the risk of being in that floodplain. If we do a renovation or if we do a new facility in that area. Does that, but as it stands right now, that's just kind of, it is what it is. In talking with Jeremiah, Greg, and some of the other people on the team, it doesn't seem to have been an issue at this point. That's just not to say that it can't be in the future. So it's just something to keep in mind when we talk about should Bon Pool be in its current location? Or should it get moved and any kind of considerations for there? Now, we also looked at what are the current amenities that it's able to provide, what are the current programs that it's able to provide? And so we listed those that were identified in the survey that the pool is able to meet currently. The current location is desired. We heard that from several community members. It's where everyone knows the pool is. It's a, they really like the location and the park area around it. So they really would love to keep it there if possible. And then these are some of the current operating metrics. Currently, it recovers about forty-six percent of its expenses. The attendance year-to-year is somewhere between fifteen hundred to four thousand. That's a pretty wide range, but that's kind of best we could find what the information we, we received. And then they do a fair amount of swim lessons, somewhere between twenty-two to one hundred fifty a year. A lot of this depended on whether, how the programs, you know, were, you know, put out and how, how well marketing was done. So there's kind of a range year-to-year. This also incorporates COVID years. So just kind of keep that in mind when you're looking at those numbers. So we have, you know, that kind of information historically from Bon Pool. But also, we decided we need to do an audit, see where are all the systems currently? Like, how does it look right now? And so we didn't audit back in March of this year. And these are some of the major points that came out of the audit. None of this is probably shocking to anybody. You've probably seen it yourself, and we're dealing with some of the issues right now. The circulation system does not currently be industry standard. Right now, the pool circulates at about eight hours. Eight hours for a turnover rate. And what that means is that it takes eight hours for the pool to turn over the entire volume of water that's in that pool. The current standard, minimum standard for most bodies of water is six hours. So we're not meeting that by about two hours. That's okay right now because, because of the age of the pool, it's been grandfathered into a into that eight-hour criteria. But if any major renovations were to be done, it would need to come into that current standard. The pool structure and many of its other major structures are also either failing or reaching the end of its useful life as Jeremiah was discussing earlier. And then the diving board envelope does not meet current requirements. I wasn't able to really identify whether that's allowed in current, in the current pool codes in your area. Because you've been operating, it seems like it is. So you've probably been kind of grandfathered in there. But our recommendation would be to not open the diving board as long as it's not meeting those envelope requirements. To get all of these major things done in the items that we had listed in the audit, it's gonna cost somewhere around two million, two-point-oh-seven million dollars and would add about ten to fifteen years to the pool lifespan. At that point, you're really gonna need to have this conversation again and be looking at a new facility. Made a couple of just for you here to highlight what Jeremiah was talking about. So currently, the water heater is now no longer functional. When we had spoken and I put these slides together, it was at sixty-five degrees. It's now at sixty-seven. So coming up a little bit, the circulation pump is likely gonna fail here pretty soon as well. You can see that it's leaking water pretty regularly. And then sounds like this may have gotten fixed or at least is working at the moment. The modern pools use an automated chemical feeding system. And last time Jeremiah and I spoke, the chlorine feeding system was not functioning correctly. And so they were looking at replacements for those, which all in all, with everything that needs to happen, that chlorine feeding system is probably the easier of all of them to replace. So that's the current pool information. So what we wanted to do is to be able to evaluate whether we need to, you know, renovate the current pool or build a new center. We also wanted to consolidate all the information that we got on these new builds. So I'm gonna go through each of these three options in more detail. But for right now, we're just gonna summarize it so that you can see the two side by side. So if we're going to do a new build versus renovate, the designs that we identified are gonna be somewhere between six-point-five to thirteen million dollars construction costs. When I go through these options in a little bit more detail here in a minute, you'll see that the actual project cost is about twenty-seven percent larger than this construction cost. You've got soft costs built in, things like escalation, design fees permitting. All those go into the project, but if you're looking at hard construction costs and apples to apples with the renovations that need to be made, we want to make sure we're comparing like to like. So somewhere between six-point-five to thirteen million, depending on the type of option. These are the amenities that are incorporated into the designs for each and also the programs that are incorporated into the design. So we made sure that all of these options are going to meet the top four, if not more, survey items in both programs and amenities. It keeps the current park location, but does move it to the top of the hill where that parking lot is above the baseball field. And then it also increases the potential operating metric. So increases the cost recovery potential to somewhere between sixty-nine to seventy-eight percent would dramatically increase attendance because of use for several reasons, new, new facility and then also usability. And then would also increase the potential for swim lessons to quite a bit more than what was currently being offered. So this slide is just comparing the two side by side. Bon Pools over here on the renovation side, a new bill is over here on the left side. And you can see each layout and kind of risk and, and factors side by side here. Based on this information, our recommendation would be a new build for several reasons. This, a new build pool is going to meet all of the community needs and desires. It's gonna meet all the top amenities that are requested. It keeps the current park location, just moves it out of that floodplain. And you're gonna see increased cost recovery attendance and some lesson capabilities there with that new build. So next, I'm gonna move on to the three different options that we had identified. But before I move on to that, are there any questions about any of the information that I've gone through so far? And we can absolutely wait till the end, but just wanna take this chance to pause real quick.
Yeah, I have a question. How did you come up with the, on a new build, sixty-nine to percent, seventy percent cost recovery? Do you have data to back up those, that statement?
I do, and yeah, you'll see that here in the next few slides. Yeah. If you see down here on the summary slide, the indoor-outdoor, we identified the cost recovery somewhere around sixty-one percent. Which is on the high end of what we would see for an indoor facility because it's indoor/outdoor, that makes sense. Outdoor is gonna be higher. So the first one's about sixty-eight percent. The second larger facility is about seventy-seven percent.
Also, when you say floodplain, and maybe this is a better question for John or Jeremiah, how many times has Bon Pool flooded? Since the building?
One time.
Yeah, one time.
And how many years, John? Thank you.
All right. So first, we'll look at option one. The options go from small to large. This first one is all outdoor. The indoor features are the bathhouse features, things like a lobby, multipurpose party room, offices, locker rooms, changing rooms and concessions. The pool is a six thousand square foot leisure pool. It has a zero beach entry, a play structure, wet deck, which is like a lounge area with a shallow water, a current channel, a couple of water slides that you see detached up here at the top, and then a crossing activity. This option comes in at a total project cost of about eight-point-two million dollars. These are examples of some of those amenities. So the slide feature that I showed up at the top, this is a good example of what that might look like. Crossing activities, this is the lounge area. These have become really popular features lately. Current channels and play structures. All of these options show these features in some, some sort of mix. This is the cost of construction for option one. We split it into the facility, indoor facility, so the lobby and the bathhouse area, and then the outdoor aquatic center, so the pool itself. Total construction cost is coming in at about six-point-four million. Then when adding in the soft costs, escalation contingencies and design fees permitting, that all comes into about eight-point-two million. You can see this estimate was as of last year. We haven't really touched these since last year. But we will update the costs for the final report. This is what it would look like on site. So you can see here's the baseball diamond to the right. And then the parking area and, uh, facility to the left. Option two, uh, has a lot of the same indoor features, uh, party rooms, offices, locker room, family changing rooms and concessions. The pool has, keeps the same six thousand square foot leisure pool, but then also adds a eight lane twenty-five yard lap pool. Uh, this would have, uh, one meter diving as well. And that envelope would meet current, uh, diving requirements and as well as a climbing wall feature, uh, which you'll see here in a minute. Uh, so this is down here on the right is an example of a competition pool. This one's slightly bigger than what we're showing, but you can see the, uh, climbing wall there in the back uh, and the diving boards as well to the right of the climbing wall. Uh, from a construction cost standpoint, um, this facility is coming in and at about eight point eight million in construction costs and then adding in the soft costs, uh, comes in at about eleven point three. And what it would look like on site. And then option three, um, this one takes that six thousand square foot leisure pool, keeps that outdoor with the slide package that we showed. Um, and then takes that eight lane twenty-five yard, uh, competition pool and brings that indoor for competitions for high school and college competitions. The competition pool in this case would feature one and three meter diving. So diving competitions could be held at this facility. Would also feature a climbing wall. So, um, to provide some more recreational, uh, use in the winter time and this total project comes in at seventeen point six million. Here you can see what the climbing wall and competition pool might look like, spectator seating, diving and multipurpose rooms. Those are the same kind of outdoor feature examples. Um, and the construction cost for this construction itself comes in at about thirteen point eight. And then adding in soft costs at about seventeen point six. And what it might look like on site. And then getting into the financials. So this is a summary of the, uh, attendance expenses and, uh, cash flow. So, uh, this is for option one. We would assume in a total attendance of around forty thousand, uh, visits. A, uh, cash flow of negative one hundred twenty-one thousand dollars and a cost recovery of about sixty-nine percent. Uh, for option two, that attendance would increase to about forty-nine thousand. And the cost recovery would increase to about seventy-seven percent. And that actually brings down the cash flow to one hundred nineteen thousand. And then indoor pools are very expensive to operate. You are gonna see a much higher attendance. So we're showing about a hundred and seventeen thousand. But because they are more expensive to operate, you've got year-round, uh, labor, which is the major driver to that cost. It brings the cost recovery down to about sixty-two percent and the cash flow, uh, just short of negative, uh, half a million. To create these financials, we used, uh, these fee structures for each, um, up, outdoor one and outdoor two, outdoor two, uh, increase the cost to residents just slightly to ten dollars. For adults, you can see the daily admissions and season pass assumptions that we used. And then going to an indoor, um, outdoor facility, um, really kept much of the fee structure from the outdoor two. Um, and these are all based on similar facilities, um, in other areas and their fee structures. So it's very much on par with what we would see around the country uh, and in the area. What we do is we take that fee structure and we calculate a assumed per cap. So for option one, we would see a per cap of about six dollars. This is a summary of all the revenue for the facility. Uh, we're including memberships, programs, food and beverage and rentals. The total revenue numbers are here. Right here. And then the, uh, this is the cost of goods sold or the expenses related directly to these revenues, um, are here. These are not the facility expenses. These are just expenses related to those specific revenues. Uh, same for option three. You can see the revenues increased quite a bit, uh, expenses increased as well. Or I'm sorry, option two. And option three, uh, revenues double from option two, um, expenses here increased quite a bit as well. In option three, we're also incorporating, um, some meat rentals, club team in high school, some team rentals, master swimming, uh, increased swim lessons, um, water fitness and, and additional rentals. These are all the expenses for each facility. We, uh, for the first two did not include any full-time uh, expenses, uh, per direction from, uh, Jeremiah and his team. But for the indoor pool, we did incorporate, um, those, uh, some of those full-time, uh, positions. So up top, you've got your labor expenses. Next you have your, uh, direct facility expenses, uh, things like repair and maintenance, credit card fees, full chemicals, um, advertising, we use a one-to-one ratio of advertising dollars, uh, and daily attendance. Um, and then underneath you have utilities, HVAC, electricity, communications, trash and water. Um, and then programs underneath that. The total operating expenses are this blue line down here. For option one, uh, somewhere around three hundred eighty-eight thousand. Option two, somewhere ju- uh, just over five hundred twenty-five thousand. And then option three, somewhere around one point three million. This capital replacement fund is an amount of money that we recommend setting aside annually for those capital items. We understand that this is not always, uh, doable for municipalities, but we wanted to make sure that we show that. So, um, everyone understands that there is, you know, those, uh, annual costs that, that do come up. Um, and then here you can see on the left, all the assumptions that we utilized, uh, to create these numbers, uh, electricity costs, staff costs, um, and some of the advertising and, and HVAC assumptions. Again, this is that chart that brings all those together. Uh, and then lastly, we, uh, we identified, uh, some databases and some organizations that provide grants and funding for these, uh, facilities. These are several databases where, um, they put together a lot of the grants that are available and you're able to, um, apply for those and find information of all those, um, at these databases. These are some organizations. Most of these are for operation costs, not capital costs. So just keep that in mind. Uh, most of these are for things like life jackets for programs or swim lessons. Type items. Several organizations that do that, uh, in the aquatic industry and, um, those are very low bars to reach for, for getting those funding or for getting that funding. Um, and then lastly, some of the community partners that we recommend working with to meet those funding requirements as well. Area, community and health foundations, radio stations, local businesses, colleges, yes, other municipalities. We see a lot of, uh, public-private partnerships, um, nowadays for aquatic facilities. So, um, all of those are absolutely, um, should be on the table for, for funding. Wanted to make sure that we went through that fairly quickly without leaving out some information, cause I know that's a lot. It's dense. But at this time, I am happy to answer any questions that y'all have. Um, if I can't answer it right now, I'm more than happy to get y'all, um, those answers. Um, immediately after the meeting.
I think it's one question I have is, you know, instead of reinventing the wheel, can we leave it? It's only flooded there once. Can we leave the building that's there instead of putting all that money into that building, maybe renovating, updating the actual building and redoing the pool in the current location with some of these features, if not all of them?
Sure. Uh, so to redo the pool with the features that we described, uh, would take a pretty major renovation. You're gonna be creeping into the same construction numbers that we were showing. So if you remember, option one was about, I think, six point two million or six point five million, uh, construction costs. Right now, we're anticipating to renovate the building and the pool, just the minimum things that need to be done. If you're gonna do the pool and the building, it's gonna be somewhere around four million dollars. If you're adding in some more kind of functional changes, you're gonna quickly get into that six million dollar range. And so really at that point, you know, is it worth keeping the pool at that current location or just moving up the hill and doing something brand new?
And another question I have is I know that the focus groups, um, I saw Santa Heights and Adrian College listed on there. Um, you know, what was their interest or are they, you know, interested in this and pursuing, you know, teams? If that was to go indoor where that, you know, they're contributing to that, I guess, what, what did they, what kind of feedback did they give you? I guess is what I'm asking.
Jeremiah, that's okay. I'd like to give you that question. I can answer it, but I think you gotta have a better feel.
Yeah. So discussing with, with both schools, yeah, um, and Adrian, Sienna said maybe if they're, the only thing they're really interested is using the facility as potential rehab center. They were not interested in anything in regards to swimming or diving. Uh, so they were, you know, they were really overly excited to really kind of explore, um, any funding options. Adrian College simply said, if you build it, we'll consider creating a swim team, creating a dive team, um, and we'll look to possibly rent. But again, coming on board and partnering at all, they, they really, really weren't on board with that. It was just simply, if you build it, we'll look at creating teams. Then obviously that puts yet, who knows how many years if they were to do that. So again, the cost was solely, um, on the city.
I guess, uh, you know, my question, I don't think was answered like the way I like to, you know, so when it comes to a cost recovery on the grand idea or, 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 or pool, do you have any information and data from other communities that are size, our socioeconomic status, our demographic, when it comes to return on that, was really what I was looking for. Not just more so projection. Do you have any other examples from communities that are similar to Adrian, um, that you've seen overturn on?
Yes, I mean, I can, so this information isn't really published. So it's gotta be gleaned from, uh, doing this type of work. Uh, so we do have it. And I can provide some examples, just not in this, um, in this presentation. The so I guess, are, is your question, is your question more, is this possible? Or is your question more what other communities have done something similar that are of the same size and same, uh, demographic?
Right. Well, the question was, cause like, you know, we've already dealt with this kind of similar issue when it comes to a big project in the county, without getting the data that we wanted in regards to return on that. And so I wanted to know if there's any, any communities that you've worked with in the past that are similar to Adrian, um, when it comes to our population and our socioeconomic status when it comes, cause what makes bone pool great, in my opinion, is that it's portable. Anybody can essentially afford to go there. And so, uh, again, I see your protective or your recommend, your recommended fee structure. But again, I see some added cost there, even if it's a dollar or two or three, that's some families, that's a significant amount of money. And so I want to go with, from a return standpoint, do we have a city or, or somebody that's you work with that can give us the information when it comes to what their returns are?
Yeah, I can, um, so I don't have that immediately available, but that is something that I can absolutely put together for y'all.
Cause I love the idea of the grand big idea, but you know, I think that we gotta kind of be careful where we go. It's like, because in my, in my opinion, a, a community pool is just what it is. It's for kids to keep cool in the summertime, you know? And I love the bells and whistles, you know, and I think a lot, like, like the mayor said, I think that, you know, moving locations, it's flooded once, you know, why do we have to, you know, move it to wherever the location, that location will be. Uh, but more so, I think that home pool is special, you know, because it's portable, you know? And, and I didn't see any increasing cost. Cause pools are money pits, no matter if it's a new pool, pool, I will tell you, they are. The, uh, AV from the Adrian Public Schools on Saturday and First Fridays told me that if he could, I mean, and Adrian brought the great swim team, you know? And I have a state champion, uh, swimming that works for me, but they're money pits. And, and, and from a municipal standpoint, you know, to be schooled or your city, you gotta look at, you know, we're never gonna make, we're never gonna be break even on this. I think that you understand that too, so obviously.
And also what's a little concerning is like, where, where are these numbers for like attendance and seeing that? Cause I, I, I have that fear that if the price goes up, our tenants necessarily isn't going to match that. Because I, I, I do feel we are in an area where it's gonna be difficult for some of these families to afford that. And I, and I'm concerned about that attendance and are those really accurate? Projection when it comes to the attendance.
What, before the breakdown, what was the current family cost for?
Sixty dollars was what the early bird is about.
He didn't make the early bird special?
Uh, it went to seventy-five.
That's sixty dollars for the year?
That, that was individual, individual. I'm sorry. It was sixty-four, um, a city resident for a ball pool pass and a hundred and twenty for the fam- city of Adrian residents and or Adrian homeschool students.
To answer your question about attendance, um, the numbers are from, uh, facilities, like facilities and like communities that we see around the country. This, there's not a hard and fast equation for doing this. It's a bit of art and science. Our team is very, um, experienced at both operating facilities. All of us have operated facilities for over a decade, um, as well as have been doing this work for several years. And so we backcheck these all the time. For those reasons, we also try to keep those attendance numbers very conservative. We do not, uh, wanna paint just a rosy picture, just to say, just so y'all will say, hey, let's go ahead and build this. What we try to do is paint a picture that is feasible, that is attainable. And that, um, you know, is, is more or less conservative so that, um, it's something that i- is reachable. That's our method for how we do it. I will, I can provide some more details about how, what goes into that attendance number. It's a mix of demographics, pool size, pool amenities. But we take all of that into consideration when we put together these attendance numbers. It's not just something that's kind of pulled out of thin air. We do take into account demographics and the population around the facility as well.
And weather?
Absolutely.
Let me close, just looking at your summary chart there on the screen right now. That's on an annual basis?
That's on an annual basis, correct?
That's correct.
So. Go through the three options, if you go with indoor-outdoor option. We'd be putting in eight hundred and one thousand dollars a year to operate the pool. And for to afford the pool.
One, uh, one point.
Plus the deficit in operations.
Yeah, the expenses for that pool would be about one point three, you recover about eight hundred.
I, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at that.
Yeah, sorry.
Subsidizing it to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, that's correct.
Give the current capacity, Jeremiah, compared to.
Are you talking average attendance?
Capacity of the pool as a whole?
Three fifty.
Separate from the floodplain issue, me close, can you comment on the. I know you and I have talked about the federal commission, the issue with being down in the water table as well.
Yeah, um, so I completely get, you know, the arguments, it's been here. You know, for several decades, it's only had one flooding event, and that's absolutely true. We generally just don't recommend building a pool within a floodplain, just like you wouldn't recommend building most structures within a floodplain. Because at some point, you're likely to have a flood. A major flooding event that's going to cause quite a bit of damage. That being said, we do pools and floodplains. All the time as well, so we just, there's things that we can do to to mitigate it, it's going to increase the cost a little bit, but. We can do that. You know, when it floods, you're likely, it's not the water itself, it's the everything else that comes into the pool that. That is going to cause the damage. So trees, limbs, trash, cars, whatever comes down. That creek is what's going to cause the damage, so. Sorry, Greg, is that answering your question?
Oh, my separate question was about the water table itself, so separate from the floodplain, this pool sits in the water table.
It does sit in the water table, and that's very normal conditions, we do. Static release valves at the bottom of the pool, so that full structure is not going to pop out out of the ground. We put in some pits and other things to make sure that any water that's coming into the. Either building structure to the pool structure is going to be dealt with, so. That's not an issue, that's something that we engineer all the time. It's the, it's being in that floodplain is just more of a long-term consideration that needs to be taken into account.
There are questions for me close or discussion?
Man, I think we should, we should figure out what we're going to do this year, and you know, I know the boiler, if a new boiler is six, four, six months out, I think you need to. Kind of brainstorm collectively on that first, or because I I have trouble. Supporting the big idea unless the voters have a say on that, that's a lot of money. And and and, you know. I know we like to make decisions, but that's a double-digit million-dollar number, and they should have a say in it. That type of facility is important to them, then they'll hope for. But in the short term, I think that, you know, obviously the boiler and the pump, after seeing it this morning, and the mayor was there too, it's. Spewing out water and that's not functionable, I mean, it's running. I think in the private sector, we we deal with stuff like that, but you know, you want to be, when you deal with kids and. And just how important that pool is to the community, I think we need to brainstorm on what we like to do collectively and in the short term also. But the big idea, I am, I'm I'm supportive of it if the voters.
You said the big idea, you talked about number three?
Well, I mean, just any of the, you know, when it comes to like the aquatic. Big, big ticket items, seventeen point, seventeen point six million dollars. Pretty much a year, that's a lot of money, pretty much a year, you know, of usage.
I would be of a part of the subsidy.
Current cost of operation?
So last year, you estimated because the Y was was running all this roughly about fifty thousand dollars. So we subsidize, we subsidized about about thirty-two thousand.
That's not counting operational costs, right? Because the Y, or is that together?
That was together.
Okay.
So, so now that we're along, it'll be like fifty-two?
Yes.
Well, it will be this year because we're not going to collect the revenue.
It would have if we were going to be.
So our cost every year for that pool, right, as it stands right now, is thirty-two thousand?
That was on the high end this year, yes, it's it's been so.
It'll be worse this year, it'll be in fifty range because we're not charging.
Yeah.
But in looking at years past with the data, the Y provided us with their operations, it hung roughly twenty to thirty. And this year was on the high end, it was the highest I've seen with the data they provide over the last five to six years, it's thirty-two thousand.
And that's been consistent since we did it, remember, we had years, six years ago or so, we made, the city used to have a seat at the table on the operational side, but then we. Hold the former city administrator, we need to have some. Say on how you run it, you know, also, so, gotta keep going, the pools, you're never going to make your money back, not even close on it. It's the way it is and and, but, you know, it's it's a. I'm more concerned right now with the short term than the than the big idea.
Look, the short term, things are four to six months out, there's no short-term plan unless you. Look at next year, is that what you're talking about?
Right, right.
And like getting it through this season and then.
There's no getting it through this season, right, if all the equipment is four to six months out.
And that was one of my questions, are we even looking at, if there's no heat this year, then are are wave runners even coming in there at all? Are we looking at lessons at all?
So there's lessons, probably not, because majority of the of the kids that do it are anywhere from like two to five, right? And I said, as of this morning, coming off a hot spell of high eighty to ninety degrees. It's at where it's at now, obviously, you look at the ten-day forecast, and realistically, we live here in in Adrian, and we roughly know what the weather's going to be like. So it's not going to be consistently June, July, August, sitting at ninety degrees. I think the projected forecast, the overnights are high forties to high fifties, right? So then you're you're not looking at the pool baking and collecting really a heat. So the wave runners, we've been working with Adrian Public Schools and Chad O'Brien, the athletic director over there, they're looking at using. Adrian Public Schools for morning swims, to get their practices in, and dependent on the operation of our pool. Possibly doing their evening pool swims like they normally have, so it's really kind of, it's up in the air. But Adrian Public Schools is partnering with us and they're they're willing to help the wave runners.
Is there been any thought, just to, I I, this is not a great solution, like to get us through this season? Like, you know, I know there's systems, because they're seen in by people's houses, where they they run in the hose and it's like. The heat, it's like a black hose, it's collecting the heat, and I mean, to at least get a little bit of heat in there?
We've been working with Adrian Mechanical, and they just simply said that the size of that pool.
Yeah, this is just a lot to swallow. It should fall on those, the voters, and what do they want?
By those, as I said, I think. If we want to have a functional pool next year, we're going to have to start very, very soon planning for what that looks like. Doing that option.
What's build time? We wanted to go with a new pool.
Be close, can you comment on that? Also, if you could, the renovation, what would the renovation look like? What would build time on a new pool look like? When would you need to start to have something ready for that?
Either way. Are the renovation somewhere between? Probably nine months to a year, on a new build, somewhere around twelve months, give or take. If you're going to do the indoor/outdoor. Maybe closer to eighteen months built. That's including another year of design roundabout, so.
So, and I'm just, attendance, I have a, I have a really hard time swallowing the forty to a hundred K attendance. Coming off of fifteen hundred to four K currently. If we renovate the pool, attendance will not go up, it'll stay the same?
I would not anticipate attendance, it it'll, it might go up a little bit, but I would not anticipate attendance going up dramatically now. The attendance figures. Those are based on. Data that we received from YMCA. There were. There were some missing dates, missing times in that, so how accurate that is, I'm not really sure. I also think that currently, the pool is likely being. Underutilized from what it could be with a, you know, different design. That would allow for more concurrent usage, so right now with like the slides on that takes out. Part of the pool. Deep area is pretty large, that takes out a huge section of the pool, when you've got swim team in. Half of the pool essentially is closed off, if they're doing long course, then pretty much the entire pool is closed off, so there's a lot of. Things there that impact the availability of water space. That we would try to, you know, mitigate with a new design.
You know, Greg, what do you, no, I'm going to say, I have difficulty supporting. An option that had a lap pool or was set up with competitive swimming. I was a competitive swimmer, I just see that as having a limited amount of. Of benefit for the entire city and the entire community, I think it'll. Yeah, the teams that swim competitively will want it, and I just don't see it as being a big draw. And that's it, certainly not worth the investment in my mind.
Greg, what do you and Jeremiah need from us tonight, in regards to, because I mean, the pool's not open yet, obviously, we have to. Start thinking, what are you looking for direction-wise when it comes to sitting thing?
Well, what we have on the agenda tonight, of course, is fee waiver, it's all, well, you're always good with that, I'm sorry, concerns about that. We can wrestle right now, but so if that's the case. I think we can take a minute and think about what we've learned, but as you heard from me close, the timeline for. When we started down the path of doing the study, what we thought we were going to do was identify. A salute, a long-term solution, and then be able to implement that in parallel with operating. Home pool, if you remember, in the discussions at that time when we first approved the study. Now we're in a situation where that doesn't appear like that's going to work. But I think we have to take a minute and think about, right, are we going to have a pool next year? Because that's not going to be. Keep it on the agenda next time, continue the discussion.
And other costs is.
Well, that's right, so the, with respect to the new builds, the the demo cost works for the existing board.
I just, I worry about the renovating the current pool. When we're only gonna, you know, we we put a couple million dollars into it, and it's good for another, they're saying ten to fifteen years. I think that we're better off spending a little more money and building something new. And having it last another fifteen years or whatever. Because we're going to put a band-aid on this thing for as long as I'm down with permission. And I think that we finally backed ourselves into a corner, we have to make a decision. I personally would have a hard time. Going all out and having, you know. The 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 third option where we can host all kinds of meets and that type of thing, but I do think a new facility. In a better location, just, you know, bite the bullet, we we do the the. The lesser expensive option, but at least we're getting a pool that's going to last for another fifty years or so. And we'll have, I'll be. There'll be guarantees and a lot of the operating. Functions of that pool and so.
There's two, there are actually two aspects to that, as people have been pointing out, like, as you say, the life expectancy, maybe you're you're investing a significant amount of money for. Shorter return time or shorter lifespan. But also, the design of the current pool is such that it has all kinds of drawbacks in terms of how many users it attracts. Go to option one, even the less of the new build options, you're now creating those features that will drive. Of more users going forward theoretically, of course, if you don't include that. You know, in those attendance numbers are competitive swimmers right now, so if you don't include that lap pool aspect. You know, you're going to lose that.
Yeah, because option one didn't have that, did it?
Option one does not, and one of the, one of the, the quest of the community was.
What if you have a float, it was very low on the. On the survey. No, it wasn't, it wasn't top four on any of the characters. What have you thought about funding mechanisms, Greg? I mean, that's.
Well, it's going to have to be a model, if you want to. We have the capacity for that, so you, I mean, there's. Two kinds of general obligation bonds. Limited tax and unlimited tax, unlimited tax requires the vote of people, limited tax, which is what we. Issued, for example, for our municipal facility, we issued a series of three of those. Two of which have now fallen off, but the third one is just coming online this year, as a matter of fact, that's about three point nine million dollars still remaining. So those, you know, you don't get quite as good an interest rate, but you don't need it, it doesn't have to be put to a vote. You can just float those bonds. That's, you know, by comparison. Payments on those are. In the four hundred thousand dollar a year range and.
Plus operating loss.
That's, yeah, and that's not including the operating loss. Uh, no, I meant, I'm talking about the current, for for our four million dollars, but now it's a short window in terms of its payoff, it's paid off by. Paid off by twenty thirty-four, only would be general obligation bond free by thirty-four. We're also paying for the John's Control Project, it's ten million dollars over twenty years. Those payments are also in the four hundred thousand dollar range right now, they're going to go up north of half a million dollars a year as that matures. You know, so, but our overall debt load that we're allowed to have is thirty-four million dollars. We're not even close to our debt.
Well, you said it's four hundred thousand dollars on a four million dollar bond, what's that payment going to be at sixteen million?
The the interest and the amortization of all that, I, we could project that, but I don't. For you right now, and I don't know what interest rate they got back, I don't know, when, two thousand nine was it?
I, I, while I. The numbers are a little bit. Hard to absorb, I do think having a community pool is incredibly important. the numbers are a little bit, whoa, hard to absorb, I do think having a community pool is incredibly important, um, as, I said before, I was on the first wave runner swimming, I was a little pool rat at that pool every day of my life for probably ten years. My family had a cool pass. My little sister, her nickname is Smurf because that pool was sometimes cold and we would turn blue, cause we still wanted to swim, we didn't care, how cold the pool was, so I think we'd be surprised how many kids show up and swim even though the pool was cold. But I, I do think having a community pool is incredibly important. I would like to seek some more community conversation about the cost, um, but I hope that we keep this on the table consistently, decide because I, she was a competitive swimmer and quite frankly led me into the Navy's a search and rescue swimmer, so. I hope that we keep this on the table consistently until we make a decision.
And me, it was the total opposite, it was, that was my only recreation going off this bomb pool, that's it, I mean, back then it was seventy-five cents a session, so I would, walk from Hawk Avenue, if you've ever been to, well, like, behind Wendy's, there's like steps that lead down and go back, that's the only, I didn't, I couldn't afford Little League, couldn't afford anything, but bomb pool was affordable, you know, and that's why I'm very, that's what got me involved in, in city government, is because when they made that decision to cut the bike department, you know, how important that pool was, so, you know, Kelly's absolutely right, I mean, it's, what was that?
Hit me in trouble.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I got players that I coached that, you know, that come from tough, tough backgrounds that, have seen them passes there, that they're there again, and I think Jeremiah told me that they're there every single day on the bikes, you know, and, and, keeps them out of trouble, like you said, and, and, and gives them something to do, so definitely it's very, very important to the community, but numbers are.
And if I worry about the cost, like, I don't wanna make it too prohibitive, you know, I mean, cause that's what it's there for, it's the community pool, like, I don't wanna, that's why, you know, they don't all go in the center for that, it's exactly, you know, and that's not very big either, but, yeah.
And to rewrite Mary, what, what you said, um, last year being my first year, down at Bone Pool i- in this role, that was one of the constant conversations, like Commissioner Hell was, I coached football for a long time at your public schools. I remember the first couple of days going down there, I would hear from across the pool, Mr. Davies, Coach Davies, all these kids that live in our city, live locally right around the pool, were there, and that's their, they were there all the time. It wasn't just once in a while, I would see the same kids and families down there, so like, Commissioner Hell was saying, that is, for a lot, that is their only recreational opportunity, or really kind of the main things, especially when it comes to cooling off, right? Not all, everybody has a pool, not everybody has the means to go to Devil's Lake and be at a lake house and be on somebody's boat, right? This is extremely accessible, it's affordable, um, so that's, that's one of the things, just in general conversation with kids, but also parents is, they're very much appreciative of it being extremely affordable. And so that's something I was excited for, and, you know, personally, it's, you know, I hope that we stick with that, so that entry, to Bone Pool or whatever the future site may be, um, roughly stays the same, right? We, we don't wanna price people out, um, in regards to Bone Pool or anything that we do.
Well, I think having it on the agenda next meeting with Mary will be back, um, she can weigh in, she's a swimming family too, so she can kinda give that insight, I think it's important too, so, um, definitely, we gotta keep it on our forefront.
Okay, well, we will do that, we do have a couple other things, but, um, like, time flies. Uh, we had lots of time for this, but already coming up on seven. Uh, so I wanna take a minute to, I discussed with you our, uh, trip to our sister city of Mur- of Muriamla, Japan, put the, uh, itinerary, really part of a broader Michigan Chiga Province Sifter State Program, uh, the trip was coming up. It's October eighteenth here, October twenty-eighth of this year. We have budgeted money for sending a delegation, we kinda committed to, uh, our friends from Muriamla last year when they were here that we would send a delegation. Uh, I have to now know who that delegation is gonna be, we need to make our reservation with the, with the tour, uh, by June fifteenth, so that was time, a couple of you have expressed interest. I just wanna know if there's anybody else, who wants to go, there's not really a hard and fast limit on how many people can go. Uh, a little bit first come, first served, I asked that question of, uh, I Utah, our, our contact there, and we, uh, there are always no, no to find him out, but, uh, we just gotta know by June fifteenth, uh, who's going. Mr. Miller and Mayor have indicated an interest in going.
When I'm in a rush.
That's boring, right?
They have a corner.
Do not talk about city bills this way.
I, I, we wouldn't.
Uh, and so I, I mean, I will only go if you tell me I need to go. You know, I don't, I'm not, not rooting to go, don't wanna go, but I will if you tell me you think it's important that I should go.
Cultural exchange is one of the best educational experiences you can ever have.
He's not liking that one. I think it's the home, it's staying at the home families, that's why.
Probably have to, that's probably what.
That's why he doesn't do it. He's already told me.
At Kelly and I, I will.
Uh, what's your, what's your preference of the lives to me? That's a lot, by the way, that's, but I think we're taking up a big chunk of the base of this, I'm probably going both for. I can put in whatever you want me to put in.
I, I don't think it's important. I can, I cannot go, I have my son's football and I coach my other son's football, so, is there other people here that are interested in taking a family member with them, or is that not possible?
I think I can tell them what we would like to do, and they'll tell me what's possible. Like I said, I've been, you've talked to them too, we, you can't really get a clear answer as soon. I, and I don't think we will until we've met a proposed delegation. All people have said, I'm going to just been taking your family with you or your folks with you, Kelly?
I'm pretty sure mine would go, he really enjoys.
Mine would go. I know mine, like, she might, she might enjoy it a long time.
Mine would go with her, if that was enough, but.
They can go to.
Mine would go for sure.
Also, we're gonna submit a four person delegation, um, family members if possible.
Yeah. Well, I present it that way, but you won't hurt my feelings.
Have you talked to Mary, is she interested in going or no? You know, she's just Europe right now, but.
Uh, not specifically after that question, I have raised the question a few times, and I've reported since.
How many delegates did they send last year, Jess? It seems like there were four or five.
There were five, I think, oh, one was the staff. So, is that on the board? If I can all lose, that's possible.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good, all right, perfect. Very happy with your guidance on that. But I just wanted to check in about July third, uh, the mayor pointed out, there's a lot of events going on, fireworks and such, that I, we have that scheduled for our meeting. Uh, we're not closed, we're open that day, uh, at City Hall, so, not a problem to have a meeting, but just wanna make sure you really know, uh, your meetings.
Doesn't matter to me, I just brought it up. We have lake houses and boats, cause I got, I'm here, but.
No, no, that's the Monday? Well, I would like to not. Come, you don't want missiles, oh.
Yeah. That's why I brought it up, I said, you know, I read the resolution and the resolution says, if they're closed that day, we go to the next day, you know, for you. So then, if we don't, then what date do we go to is the next question.
Right, cause we can't go the next day.
Cause that's what Greg and I were talking about.
Let's just keep it on the third, fireworks will happen after dark. Look it out here.
Oh, yeah, we'll be out, out here after you.
Usually we. You know, Robin, other names on July fifth? Michelle, do you know?
What's that?
July fifth, is there anything scheduled that night?
I have nothing I'm aware of, possible family commitment, um, that day out of town, but it's still unknown. I don't know.
I won't be there on that.
I can't.
I'm gonna speed your, you matter, that's fine.
All right, so.
We'll make it fast.
Well, let's get out by nine. Yeah, that's all I have now, well, I'll, I'll look at them.
All right, at this time, we will begin public comment, we will start first inside the city chambers. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, you state your name and address, when we are done inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participant.
Ken Tocars, one ten South Locust, uh, Adrian Public Schools, pool operator for eleven years, um, so, this gentleman here, I know he operated your pool, I'm sure he's probably gonna tell you something like he told you that that filter, that boiler had to be replaced a long time ago, shame on you guys, you budget for police cars, you budget for ambulances, you budget for fire trucks, but you don't budget for a fifty-year-old boiler, and you don't put plans.
You stand still while you talk.
You don't put plans in place to replace a boiler. Then, on top of it, you go and went out to the pool, it's been open, so shame on you guys for that. Um, the other one I'm gonna talk about is Crimson Holdings. I'm scared because you guys, the paper says settlement agreement. Now, I know a lot of things say that you guys told them to put in a stack, and they put that stack in. So the only reason I'm thinking that there's a settlement agreement now is because you told them to do something, they did it. Now, you can't really expect them to do something else, so that's why I think you guys are looking at a settlement agreement. And my concern is that what's gonna happen is if you guys do, do enter into a settlement agreement, and that doesn't solve the problem, that scares me, I don't think you guys should be entering into a settlement agreement. Um, getting back on the pool, I got a little bit more time, um, fifty thousand, that's about mu- as much it's gonna cost to operate. Um, Jeremiah, how much money are you gonna get? For the wave runners to use the April Public Schools, nothing. You're not gonna get anything. And the same thing goes for Santa Heights and Adrian County, I'm not gonna give you guys a point for a pool. Why didn't you guys contact the county? The county wants to build a hundred and ten million dollars facility, and you guys never contacted them, why didn't you contact them? Greg, you're talking about Johnson Controls contract, you got a Johnson Controls contract, that, that basically you got that money, and you were supposed to document that you're saving money from the energy savings to pay for that, so that shouldn't become a non-channel fund. Public Act calls for that, I've asked for that documentation several times, I think the contract says that they're only gonna do it for three years. Supposed to do it for the whole length of the contract, is that you guys are gonna take it over for the rest of the contract? You guys scare me.
Robert Banky, two five six, I am withdrawing, later tonight, you're scheduled to evaluate the city administrator. And it is clear that the majority of the city commission does not understand the value of a meaningful written evaluation process. Process recommended by Michigan Municipal. Sadly, there's not a written evaluation process for our administrator. Our city administrator makes six figures and manages a thirty-plus million dollar budget, yet no written feedback from the mayor, or the commission is likely to take place. If history is any indicator, there will not be a written self-evaluation, the commission will not provide any written feedback, and no written goal will be established to be used for the next evaluation next year. The commission is using a process that erodes the public trust of our residents, and is not a recommended model. Adrian previously had a written system for administrators, why the change? Your verbal standard is in stark contrast to the recent written and transparent evaluations of the Adrian Public Schools Superintendent and County Administrator. Local businesses, including Meyer, evaluates in writing its baggers, air markets, custodians, for students, its bus drivers, uh, even here, a local donut shop does the same. It's up standard that you set as a commission permeates all levels of the city, as word on the street is, department heads are not evaluated regularly, nor are rank and file employees, some employees report it has been over a decade since receiving an evaluation. This clearly is a systemic issue, missionaries, you set policy and expectation. There's a strong need to develop a strategic plan goal on this critical topic and set a stronger expectation from you as the commission. Will you ensure the same basic expectations for your administrator that others have for their superintendent, their county administrator, their baggers, their custodians, bus drivers, and even their donut makers? You have the opportunity to put a hold on tonight's evaluation meeting and to establish a set of written evaluation standards that align with best practices, professionals from the Michigan Municipal League can facilitate this work. They can also provide the commission on training on how to ensure this process runs smoothly for all parties. As the leaders of the city align yourself with the leaders of those organizations and businesses that place an emphasis on ensuring that you, your employee is held to a recommended standard, a written standard. Your employee and your constituents deserve nothing less. On the Japan trip, I just wanna let you know that students from Muriamla will be in Adrian while you are traveling abroad, so there's gonna be some opportunity to use there for exchange. And the pool, I'd be happy to speak with you about the process that Adrian Public Schools used following, um, the failure of the bond, um, in two thousand and fourteen, when, uh, one of the major lunch ends was the Aquatics Center that was proposed, and it went down, uh, pretty sharply.
Hi, uh, Eric Kennedy, one zero nine, small B, uh, I emailed the entire commission, some of the staff, the mayor, um, last week about a property on the east side showing the blight that's there. Um, I think a lot of these issues are kinda tied together, if you want a lot of people that pay major taxes in the city, then you need to clean up the city, and create, uh, amenities such as the pool. There are, uh, I mentioned there that maybe we need to change the ordinance, but the fact is, the ordinance is already there and it's not being enforced. Section fifty-four dash four, line D, shows the nuisance of multiple vehicles on the property. Can look it up as well as I did today, section tens, uh, sixty-three, line, uh, I guess it's three, three zero two point eight on motor vehicles. This gentleman has multiple boats on a property, looks like a boat dealer, and no one is doing anything about it. Meanwhile, the same gentleman called the Adrian Fire Department to interrupt a ten-year-old's birthday party on Saturday night, and shut it down while there were good smores on fire pit. So you tell me what is going on in the city. Thank you.
Jason Dogos, three seventy-seven, East Church, um, I share, I'm sure Tocars, and I'm sure a lot of other people's concern, um, regarding Crimson Holdings. And I too read the article in One Connect and, um, applaud our lead, brothers and sisters who have sent the letter, and I implore you guys to actually respond to that and hold the public forum, we can get some information. I specifically would like to know with this smell that's being emitted from Crimson Holdings, and it's been voiced this last week, at least. One of the previous articles said it was hydrogen sulfide gas that's being emitted. From the CDC, hydrogen sulfide is a colorless gas with a strong odor of rotten eggs. Exposure to hydrogen sulfide might cause irritation of the eyes and respiratory sys- system, can also cause apnea, coma, convulsions, dizziness, headache, weakness, irritability, insomnia, and stomach upset. Understand that a lot of times that has to be a higher concentration, but, what actually is being put into our air? How much is it being dispersed? That smell is absolutely putrid, and if there is any type of agreement, I would hope that it gets put to the public before it's agreed upon by the city's attorneys or the council, so that we all, as a public, have a say in what happens. Is if we allow them to, yes, just put in this equipment, and if that only takes care of the odor, but not the actual underlying gas, and not just fumes. If it only takes care of the fumes or the, the smell, but we're still getting poisoned. If it only takes care of the fumes or the the smell, but we're still getting poisoned, then we're gonna have a Flint situation, but not with water. It's gonna be the the air. That's all gonna be on you guys.
Ashley from great uh city of Adrian resident. Um, I'm a member of lead and I was at the meeting where we discussed just encouraging transparency and getting um the citizens up to date. I know um it's gonna send them, you may even like the people that want the information will find it. But that's transparency can never over-communicate with your citizens. Um, I think having an open forum, the HRC has had forums, um even if it's zoom or or because I know it's hard to schedule things here, um just something to to make sure that you're putting the as much information out there as possible because not everyone comes to anything, not everyone even knows that these meetings are recorded on YouTube at this point. I think I talked about that before with several of you. That just putting the information out there and putting it in the hands of the people so they can be aware and be informed and share their concerns. I help people to report the smell. I report the smell every time I smell it all the way downtown. The taller stack is just it's just physics if we go up and it's gonna come further. It's just gonna come further west every time the wind comes up east. I feel like I'm back in those two. Like surrounded by. Um, yeah, I just wanted to really encourage some kind of forum or or communication, official communication from the city. Page on the website that just gives updates that we can even do. Literally.
My name is Dorothy Schmidt and I live at four twenty-eight Galveston Street. And I love to voice my opinion. If a man, I it reaches the age of twenty and you ask him to take on a fifty-year contract, he would be seventy years old before the contract would come due. In other words, he can't do that. It's not within his lifetime. In most good development contracts, it's my understanding, have a five-year limit within annual review. And you are to show in that review how much development has been added to the contract that you're dealing with. I'm into five-year contracts. Uh, I'm not into excessive spending. Uh, I, I have lived far beyond my expected lifetime and I expect to keep going. And I thank you.
Key Ramo, City Vader has been a couple of quick things. I have to recommend to you guys look at a newer pool and from Myers standpoint, I think with like a one hundred-year flood thing is yes, it it doesn't flood real often, but that means that it could be a bad flood would happen. So I have to recommend considering a moving out though, like something new is definitely going to be better option, I think. For numerous reasons you guys have heard already. And then um on the Crimson Holdings issue, I definitely agree with that. I want some sort of increase in conversation needs to be done exactly uh how I'm, as mentioned, can be discussed, but there definitely uh seem to be some miscommunications and a community feeling it's not getting enough information. I hope that I will find someone to do to increase that transparency, to increase that communication and and give you a forum is the answer.
At this time, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. You will hear the three-minute time limit go off. If you exceed that, and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
It's seven oh five right now, so we will begin out there at seven fifteen.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts is absent. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schreer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Roberts.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Roberts?
Motion to excuse.
Support.
Commissioner Roberts.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Schreer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Roberts is approved by an all yes vote.
At this time, I'm going to ask Police Chief Emmerich to please come forward. He is going to be publicly swearing in some officers today.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Ben Semer, Chief of Police for the City of Adrian. As you know, we're about to begin a period of turnover within the department. Something we talked about in our budget cycle. Um, there's gonna be eight officers that become eligible within the next eighteen months or so. So in an effort to uh prepare for that change, we started to recruit and train those replacements ahead of time. So when those retirements do happen, we're not left in alert with a bunch of vacancies and and fewer officers on the road. Three of our newest officers recently graduated from Wayne County Regional Academy and they have begun their field training. Those officers are Carolina Kern, Johnny Benitez, and Colin Castleberry. Uh, unfortunately, Officer Kern is not able to join us this evening. Uh, I would like to tell you a little bit about Officers Benitez and Castleberry and ask Clerk Connor to swear them in. But before that, a little background information. To become a certified police officer in the state of Michigan, one has to successfully complete a sixteen-week academy that has been approved by the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, uh, or MCOs. The course runs seven days a week and includes a wide base of subjects, rigorous physical training, pursuit driving, and scenario-based activities. MCOs is lauded as one of the most intense and thorough officer certification programs in the country. As such, it is reciprocated in many states. Once a cadet successfully completes the academy, they begin their field officer training within the department. Our FTO program consists of four phases in which each trainee gradually takes more responsibility for the calls. During the final phase, the trainer watches as all activities are handled by the trainee without assistance. So we kind of do it by percentages. You know, if you have four phases, it's twenty-five percent as you go along. And by the end of it, you're doing everything. Your trainer is is wearing plain clothes and they're watching you to make sure you know how to uh how to respond to calls and how to take the information and write the reports and do everything you need to do. Though the FTO program, it can last between four and six months based on performance. Uh, so if you're like me, you might need a little bit longer. I took six months. Um, sometimes if if you catch on like that, you got your geography down, you might finish into four months. So uh Officers Benitez and Castleberry are now actively involved in their first phase. So we will start with Officer Johnny Benitez, if you wouldn't mind coming up here, Johnny. Officer Benitez is originally from Florida. He's a Coast Guard veteran who now lives in Adrian with his fiancee and twin daughters. Johnny speaks fluent Spanish and distinguished himself during the academy by winning two separate scholarships. The Ron Prodluck Scholarship is for proficiency with firearms, in which he scored top in his class. And the Patrick O'Rourke Scholarship, which is named after the late Sergeant O'Rourke, whose family created an endowment for the training of police officers. Colin, if you would join us up here, Officer Colin Castleberry is the son of Commissioner Kelly Castleberry and former county prosecutor Bert Castleberry. Colin is the grandson of my predecessor, former chief and serving county commissioner Terry Collins. He is a graduate of Adrian High School and a Marine Corps veteran. Colin has also served his community by working with vulnerable populations within sheer the warmth. During his time in the Marine Corps, Colin earned the National Defense Service Medal, the Marine Corps Conduct Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and two C Service Deployment Ribbons. So you can see, you can see why I'm excited to add these exceptional young officers to our ranks. I am also continually grateful for the support of the administrator and the commission for the financial support to find these candidates and help them get their certification. Uh, it's something that we have done for years. The difference now is we have the support of the state. The state is starting to recognize that there are not many certified officers available, but there are a lot of good candidates. And if we can help get them through the police academy uh and pay them a wage along the way, that's that's the importance of developing those good people. So what what I would also like to add to that is this morning I had a conversation with Finance Director Owen and the wages, the tuition, and the cost of the equipment for training these three officers has all been reimbursed to the city as of this morning. So that's about ninety thousand dollars that's coming back to us. That's the commitment we were going to make, and now we don't have to. The state is is gonna support us in that. So that's that's great news. Thank you. Alright, uh Clerk Connor, if you would please swear in Officers Benitez and Castleberry.
At this time, I invite all members of the LGBTQIA community that feel comfortable coming up to accept the Pride Month proclamation. To please come forward. I will meet you there in a minute. I don't know why I picked to read a proclamation on the same day. I'm wearing brand-new glasses with a new prescription, so we'll see how this goes. I'm a little scared if I can read. Whereas the city of Adrian supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the city appointed a Human Relations Commission, which seeks to foster mutual understanding and respect among all racial, religious, and nationality groups in the city and discourage discriminatory practices among any such group or any of its members. And whereas the city of Adrian accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer and/or questioning, intersex, asexual, aromantic, agender communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city of Adrian. And whereas we as a society must acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. Now therefore, I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby proclaim June two thousand and twenty-three as Pride Month in Adrian, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQIA community that they face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. And we have a, we have a representative from the M Society, which is um, well, Ashley can explain what the M Society does. I won't do it justice, but um and and can explain and say a few words.
Uh, the M Society is I don't like microphones. I'm a behind-the-scenes kind of person. Um, uh, the M Society is a organization. It's a community activism organization. Um, we support the well-being and health of local LGBTQIA community. Um, lots of focus on youth support, um, providing community spaces where we can come together and um just support each other. Uh, we do outreach. We are currently organizing the Lenoy Pride uh Festival. This will be our second year downtown. Uh, for that, that will be September ninth, uh, right here downtown. And um, yeah, anyone is welcome to find us online, find us on Facebook, um, get involved and and help support our community.
Thank you. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schreer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted by unanimous vote.
Under our regular agenda, under ordinances, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero four is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning ordinance, Article Four, General Provisions, Section four point three four, accessory buildings. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this ordinance? That can be in-person or online as well. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schreer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian's Adrian zoning ordinance. Article thirteen B one, Local Business District, Section thirteen point four, Principal Uses Subject to a Zoning Exception Permit. Article fourteen B two, Community Business District, Section fourteen point zero three, Use is Subject to a Zoning Exception Permit. Article twenty-three O Z D, Overlay Article 23OZD, Overlay Zoning District, Section 23A.08, Overlay Zone Marijuana, 1E's OZM, and Section 23A.09, Overlay Zone Marijuana, 2 West OZM. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance. Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this ordinance? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Under Resolutions, Resolution R23-019 is from Parks and Recreation. It is a resolution to establish a policy and rates for bone pool for the 2023 season. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this resolution? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R23-020 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Kristi M. Lowe as the Adrian City Clerk and approve the City Clerk employment agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this resolution?
Hello, my name is Dory Fishman, and I'm at 428 M Street. I haven't met Mrs. Lowe. The public has not met Mrs. Lowe. We have no idea of what she will be doing, except that she will be doing Robin Connor's job. I am feeling like it would be most gracious if the commissioners found a way to introduce us as citizens of the city to Mrs. Lowe. Thank you.
Well, I am Mrs. Lowe. Very nice to meet you, everyone. I wanted to thank, first of all, Clerk Connor for retiring. No, thank you so much for all your years of service. I also would like to thank the interview committee, Mr. Elliott, Commissioner Strayer, Heather from HR for the recommendation to the commission for me to work as clerk. I do look forward to serving you all and working with you all, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's such an honor. Thank you.
As Clerk Connor, I've known Kristi for three years. We've worked together, and she will serve the city of Adrian very well. Thank you, Kristi.
Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first. When all that have spoken that want to speak inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to those on Zoom.
Good evening. My name's Gail Dunaway. I live at 423 Elm Street. And I just want a public service announcement. June is also National Garden Month. In the garden club, has a display right when you come in off of Mommy Street. Gardening isn't just about pretty little posies, but it's all about stewardship and how we treat our environment, what we put into the ground, not the latest wave petunias. So feel free, and the books are available to check out in the library.
Hello, Ken Ramos. Just letting you know that Second Friday is this Friday. Hopefully see some of you there. And looking forward to some exciting things, especially with the splash pad up and running now. Thank you.
Ashley Cavassos Frank, City of Adrian resident. I just had one thing to add. I wanted to shout out to the city's administrative assistant for being an example of how to recognize a community appropriately, a minority community appropriately, specifically. She reached out to Sakoro, our chair of the M Society, with an idea of how to publicly recognize Pride Month. And that is exactly what you should do. You should reach out to the communities that you're trying to represent to make sure that you're doing it appropriately and in a way that benefits them and represents them. I just wanted to say thank you, Michelle, for doing that. We appreciate it.
Robert Banky 256, Ironwind Drive. When the M Society and ACP and LEED developed the So You Want to Run for City Commission workshop, we asked for a copy of the tool the city commission uses to evaluate the city administrator. We felt it was critical as participants in this workshop could one day be sitting in your seat and have to prepare for an evaluation. The response we received was there is not a written evaluation process for the city administrator. After receiving almost a decade of transparent written and public evaluations myself, I was dumbfounded. Best practice is to have a clear set of standards, have the administrator provide a self-evaluation, and then through a clearly defined process, compile comments and rank the administrator. In closed session, individual perspectives are crafted into a collective voice. The board or commission then meets in open session and votes on the rankings and the compiled written evaluation. A written copy is then placed into the HR file. I highly encourage any one of you to FOIA any of mine. In fact, one year Spencer from the Telegram showed up for my evaluation, and I held it in open session so he could see the process. Why does the city commission not embrace the best practices suggested by the Michigan Municipal League and the American City County Management Association? My concerns over the evaluation were heightened even further following an email on June 2nd where an evaluation tool for the city administrator was sent, a tool that was never discussed or agreed upon in an open meeting. Alarmingly, there were very clear directions in this email to remember that everything will be done verbally, as anything written can be subject to FOIA. Commissioner and Mr. Elliott, why have you not stopped this runaway train? I urge you to immediately stop this process and call for the development of a comprehensive written evaluation process with help from the Michigan Municipal League or other expert. You cannot purposely avoid state and federal laws designed to ensure transparency and expect to retain any semblance of public trust for this body. You have the opportunity to stop this evaluation tonight and live up to the morals and values your constituents expect of you to uphold. Please take these steps needed to build public trust, not to take deliberate actions to further erode them. Thanks to Chief Emrick for the $90,000 reimbursement consideration. I would strongly suggest that you consider using that $90,000 for barricades, which is also that same price to help protect the residents during street fairs. Lastly, LEED is asking for consistent communications for residents. The last written update from the city posted in writing on social media was from March 1st. We would like at least monthly, if not bimonthly, updates to all of the constituents and residents from the city of Adrian regarding this critical issue. And lastly, gardeners are always interested in making sure that they have clean eggplants in the garden.
At this time, we will open it up to Zoom participants. For those on Zoom, you will see your time on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Halt.
I got a couple. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ms. Lowe to the city of Adrian. You know, I never thought when I went on this journey in 2015 that I would be sitting through my third clerk, but here we are. You know, according to Robin and the Commissioner Greg Elliott, we're very lucky that you were local. Because we are geographically not in the best position, but they were very happy, and I support the recommendation 100%. So welcome to the city. Secondly, I'd like to thank our chief, Ben Simrick. Again, I think that with what's going on in the city when it comes to, you know, crime, I think that any positive light that we can put on our men and women that keep us safe, I think just builds morale and gets a good confidence boost. I think officers are more than just police officers. They're social workers. They are counselors, therapists, and you name it. I will be always a guy up here, as long as I'm here, that supports that department. I think we have our number one obligation is to keep us safe, and I look forward to working with the chief and my colleagues and the city administrator on continuing those talks and providing him the resource and the tools in his toolbox to keep us safe. So, all I got.
I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to recognize and thank Jeremiah Davies and the entire Parks and Forestry team. I'm an avid bike rider, and I've been going very early in the morning and riding my bike, and it has just been pristine. I ride through the parks, I ride the trail. Everywhere I've gone, you know, our parks are just looking fantastic, and it's just very exciting that we have that quality of life here. And I encourage everyone to get out and take advantage of our beautiful parks and the beautiful trail that runs through our city. I also, I know it's on the consent agenda, so she might have been overlooked, but I just want to welcome Brandy Johns to the Adrian District Library Board. I've actually known her since she was a little girl. She was my babysitter for my children. And but her mother has been a, I don't know how many years, but she's been a librarian through Adrian Public Schools for 30-some years? Okay, well, it's been a long time. So she has, so just welcome. Thank you for taking this appointment, and we're really glad to have your expertise and your guidance on our library board. It's very important. So thank you.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and our special meeting will begin in five minutes. I call to order the special meeting for the Adrian City Commission for June 5th, 2023, for the purposes of the annual evaluation of the city administrator. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Halt.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Roberts is absent.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Roberts?
So moved. Support.
I didn't know either, sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Roberts is approved by an all yes vote.
At this time, we are going to begin with public comment. As we anticipate, this could go into closed session, and we would hate to make everybody wait. So if anybody would like to come up to the podium or online, and we will, at this time, begin public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will now close public comment.
Mayor, I would request that the commission go into closed session to conduct my evaluation.
Do I have support?
Second.
Miller and second, or Strayer and Halt. I have a motion to go into closed session from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session is approved by an all yes vote.
The performance evaluation of our city administrator Greg Elliott is now complete. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.